Call the Board of Education meeting on November 13th, 2018.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the first opportunity for public comment and members of the public may address the Board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on agenda for a future meeting by filling out the how to address the Board of Education form that is provided prior to each meeting. I know we have one from Yvette McManus.
Hi. Do you want me to walk up here or can I stay here? Doesn't matter. No. Alright. I just wanted to, hello, good evening. I just wanted to take 30 seconds out of your time, maybe 45 seconds to say seldom do you meet people in life that truly inspire you, right, that lingers with you for years to come. And I just wanted to take 30 seconds to talk about that guy right there. Yeah, Scott Humble, yeah. I just wanted to congratulate you on an amazing year that you had on the school board and I wanted to congratulate all the new people that are coming on to the school board. But I also wanted to say thank you. I wanted to say thank you for being an amazing friend, amazing mentor, an amazing person on the school board. I've had the pleasure of working with Scott in Dearborn for, I think, eight years. Yeah, pretty long time. He gets under your skin, but he's definitely a guy who pushes you. And my four favorite words from this guy have always been, "Let's make it happen." So when I taught in Dearborn, he was the guy that I went to with all my crazy ideas and unlike anyone else, he said, "Let's make it happen." And so for that, I want to say thank you. And I want to recognize you for the amazing work that you do, that you do in Dearborn Public Schools and that you do in Celine. So I just wanted to let everyone know that he's an amazing soul. I'm glad you live in Celine. I'm glad you recruited me to Celine. And congratulations to the new board members, but congratulations for being an outstanding person.
Administration.
I just have a couple of quick updates. One, I, Yvonne, and I were, was it last, a week ago Friday, we're in Grand Rapids giving a presentation on utilizing, using a learn profile to drive instructional outcomes. I'm going to pass that along so you can see a little bit about that presentation. But again, it was, I think, very well received. They did an excellent job of carrying the mail in terms of where we're going as a district. There's a lot of interest in the concept of using a learn profile, our compass for us. And so it was an exciting opportunity to kind of share that, share that story. This coming, or this past weekend was a busy weekend. We had our craft show, which annually raises a significant amount of money that is driven back into many of our student groups and our communication department to help support student programs throughout our community in so while. It's a Herculean effort that day and requires a lot of labor and certainly even impacts, you know, the roadways of our community. Understand that that continues to be something that really does drive a lot of dollars into our school district and we're very appreciative of that. The junior theater performance of Stuart Little was outstanding, my favorite one ever. I happen to have a role in that as the superintendent of schools and Stuart needed to be a substitute teacher. But I would tell you, I was very impressed. Rebecca Bue Triscoll coordinates that program through communication. There's about 40 students that were involved in that. And they really have found a niche for them in terms of their efforts to really connect with the theater arts. And again, I look forward to seeing those students progress throughout their time. This weekend, so then there was also a football game. Also, we have, because of the outcome of that football game, we have a football game this weekend. We have a rematch with Clarkston Public Schools at Oak Miss at 1:00. So I'm excited about that opportunity for our student athletes to continue to progress, hopefully continue and give us one more week of Celine football. And then also this weekend, we have our high school swim team, our girls swim team will be participating at Eastern Michigan and hopefully challenging for a site title and that. So those are our two fall sports teams that are still playing. So we're excited about that. We are wrapping up the first trimester. So it's a busy time of year.
Board of Education members.
I arrived in Grand Rapids the day after you two did your presentation. I actually heard somebody talk about it. So it was that and the children's choir apparently that brought in tears. You didn't bring them tears, but you were quite good.
Tough to compete with the children's choir.
Yeah, I want to thank anyone who's here tonight or was aware of the community conversation that Superintendent Grayton hosted last night. It was, we had about 29 people show up and it was a very lively, very interesting, very engaged group of people we had. And we're going to carry on that conversation in the future. There's a lot of work to be done on issues related to diversity and equity in this district and I'm looking forward to the work.
We had a foundation meeting this morning. Oh, I'm sorry. And wanted to remind everybody that with Thanksgiving, you know, it's the denial, but Thanksgiving is actually next week, which means that Giving Tuesday is coming up and the foundation is actually promoting that. We've got some students, our student rep on the foundation has done a video sharing it in the high school for Giving Tuesday in support of the foundation and all the things that that does. So that's a charity that we would want to encourage. And then also, in case you're hungry after the meeting tonight, Mancino's Pizza is the, is giving a donation back to the foundation for anything of their sales tonight. So we might need to have reconvene at Mancino's. And the date for the snow blast is set for February 2nd. And so that's an exciting time to watch for other things with the foundation for that.
I'd just like to quickly address the voting day at Celine High School. So some students were saying that voters were coming into the school and like looking around the library and going around. So that raised some concerns among the students. So I don't know how we would address that, whether that be having admins guarding the door, the gym, or having more people watching. But just I know what the students were a bit concerned about voters coming in.
Laundering the voters.
Yeah.
So I want to, I want to thank Scott also for his work. I won't do it quite eloquently, but good friend. And then I also want to point out Susan Nystep and Jennifer Steppen, they're the new trustee elects there in the audience. Thank you for your effort to stand up.
Yeah, stand up.
Thank you. Can I recommend a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Remove, support.
On the page, opposed, hearing that, motion carries 6-0. Sports, the high school national merit semifinalists and commended scholars.
Hi, thank you for having us here tonight and recognizing our students. We are recognizing 20 students tonight. 10 are commended scholar students and 10 are national merit semifinalists. These recognitions come by their PSAT scores, which they take in mid-October of their junior year. Students receive their scores in December of their junior year, but they really don't find out whether they're a commended scholar or a national merit semifinalist until basically September of their senior year. So they found out this year. And then at some point here in the next few months, we'll find out if any of them are national merit finalists. Approximately 101.5 million high school students take the PSAT each year. Of those, 50,000 of them are commended scholars and 16,000 of them are national merit semifinalists. So that's about 1%. And we have 20 students here that are, that are being recognized. So that says a lot about it. We have a lot of outstanding representation here from Celine High School. Not only are they academically very successful, they're also leaders in a lot of different aspects of their school and their community. And some of the things I know that they do, there are many captains of their respective teams across country, water polo, swim, dive, football, track, tennis, and marching band. Some represent the school in uproar and seed, which is a, which is a leading groups on their focus and diversity. We have NHS, student council members, book club participants, science olympian robotics, which a few of the students won't be here tonight because they're practicing for robotics. We have one that's in Taekwondo, found that. We got a couple dance, some work in the community from Mickey's Dairy Twist all the way to the laboratories at University of Michigan. So, and one young lady has had shoulder surgery today, so she won't be here. So, but at this time, I would like to have the students come up, introduce themselves to you. I want the students to, yeah, I didn't tell you that. Introduce yourself to them. Let them know if you're a commended scholar or national merit semifinalist. And then say, let them know one positive experience or one of the great things that you can recall from your high school days at Celine, other than the principal. I'll let them come up. Then we're going to go over here, take a photo, and then you guys can stay or can leave. I don't care who starts it.
Abdallah.
Oh, there we go, right by me.
Alright, I'm Ethan Shell and I'm a commended scholar. And I think the whole administration, all the teachers at Celine are just super great. I think that's an experience I've had, like every teacher and every person who works in the, in the community, I can just always just have a conversation with. So I think that's a great, great thing about Celine.
Hello, my name is Connor Tarek and I'm a commended scholar. And to add on to what Ethan said, I would say that my most positive experience at Celine would be the teachers. And every teacher that I've had so far, I can remember is willing to go the extra mile and if I need help or if I have a question on something, they're willing to stay, meet me a little bit before school or after school to help me get there.
Hi, I'm Sabrina Stock. I'm commended. And I think my favorite part about Celine is how open everybody is in terms of listening to kids. I know I've been to previous schools and none of them have been at this level where they really treat us with respect and kindness. So I really appreciate how open and listening every adult is at this school, whether it is the teachers or administration or the school board, how they really treat us as respectful adults and not just as children. So thank you for that. Celine is a really great community. I'm glad to be part of it.
Hi, my name is Annika Olson and I'm a commended scholar. And I think that one of the best things about Celine is just the number of opportunities that are available to us as students. For me, that comes in sports. And so I've done a bunch of sports through Celine and some of the coaches I've had in my time here have been the most supportive and just loving, really great people that I've been lucky enough to have in my life.
Hi, I'm Nikolai Tomov. I'm a merit semifinalist. And I think one of the best things about Celine High School is the, just the peers and all the, like the variety of clubs that are available to the school. I know that myself, I'm, I'm really into the Quiz Bowl, Quiz Bowl team. And I've had a lot of fun doing that over the last couple of years. And I know there are tons of other clubs and sports that students enjoy doing and it makes high school more enjoyable.
Hi, my name is Lea Alad Daed and I'm a national merit semifinalist. I like a lot of things about school actually, but what I really do appreciate is the number of opportunities I get to really explore all of my interests. It's hard balancing them, but I can learn and be flexible and I can really pursue what I want to.
Hi, I'm Leah Alad Daed and I'm a national merit semifinalist. And I think my favorite thing about Celine has been actually the science olympiad team because it's really been just such a positive experience for me. And I know I've grown so much as a person because of it. And I've met some of my lifelong friends. And if, if I could go back in time, I would do it all over again.
Alright, hi, I'm Ailah Lau. I'm a semifinalist. I think one of the best things about Celine is how we have a lot of resources to achieve what we want and how the administration is really open to our ideas. And we can have like a healthy conversation instead of just being told what to do.
Hi, I'm Ruth Sullivan. I'm also a semifinalist. And going off of what Annika and Lea both said, I think the best thing about Celine is the opportunities that we have, not only in the classroom, but in clubs and the opportunities that going to Celine opens up for us in the world. So thank you for that.
I'm Jevon Ishioka. I'm a commended scholar. And I think my thing that really sticks out about Celine is just the opportunities and support you have. That's, it's no coincidence that we have 20 people that are either commended scholars or semifinalists due to the great preparation we had for taking these tests because of all the great administrators and teachers we've had throughout the years. So thank you for that.
Hi, I'm Erica Chetel. I'm a semifinalist. My favorite thing about Celine is the atmosphere in Celine. The teachers do really push us to our best potential. And every student has a strong work ethic. But we also have time to explore our interests through clubs and organizations.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Kosak. I'm a semifinalist. And my favorite part of Celine is how qualified the teachers are in the subjects that they teach. I really learn a lot.
Yeah, if you guys can tighten up, we'll get a picture.
The next report will be the high school gymnastics.
Any reports tonight related to Celine gymnastics, but there's been some transition there. I've invited athletic director Andrew Parrish to come and kind of talk a little about this transition and what it means for, for our gymnastics program. So.
I could just, I'll start as, as part of the process as well of determining. I'm also a parent of a gymnast that was here for four years. So I really have value in the sustainability of this program. And as you will learn or hear about, gymnastics at the high school level is not something that, there's a lot of schools that have gymnastics at, at the high school level, mostly are at the club. So we, Mr. Parrish's discussions and thoughts throughout this thing have an opportunity to continue, I think, what is going to be a sustainable program. And I'll let him take it over from there.
Thank you. So for instance, we'll wrap, hit on the main word here, sustainability. We find ourselves, well, we found ourselves entering this year looking for a coach for the third time in three seasons. We did have a small pool of candidates, but I kind of got the impression we'd be in the same situation next year. So in short, we're moving the operation of the gymnastics program over to Gym America. With these kind of three pillars around sustainability, for me, the consistency and quality of the coaching and instruction, are they going to have the same folks day in and day out, year in and year out at the same level rather than kind of hitting a reset? Student athlete participation, we've seen numbers eight to 12-ish roster size. We need to drive that up absolutely if we're not only going to sustain but thrive with a, with a winning program. And then you have to have a quality facility and availability, which I'll have some images at the end, the facility over Gym America absolutely provides. So, so again, over there, we want to keep consistency in what's going on every day. To drive that interest, there's youth programs all day over there. The hope is to house these in the same place, we can drive some interest in the high school program as these youth club athletes get to the high school age. And then to have something offsite, obviously, there, there needs to be some efficiencies gained. We can't just go anywhere. There's very close proximity to Celine High School with this facility. And the quantity and quality of the equipment that these student athletes are on, for example, there is one of each apparatus at the high school gym, which is the vault, the beam, the bars and the floor exercise. There's 10 beams at Gym America, there's six sets of bars. They can get a lot more work done in a lot less time, be highly efficient with what they're doing. Obviously though, moving offsite, we don't want to do that without doing our research. We looked around at some successful programs. You can see them listed here. Highlight Northville was a state run-up last year. All those have offsite programs. And then we have some successful teams within our, our portfolio of sports at Celine already, with ice hockey at the Q, bowling in Oakwood Lanes, skiing's over Mount Brighton, and the golfers participate out at Brookside. So again, the goals here, when I say I want to maintain a Celine team, I don't want a group of kids that goes over to Gym America and just does gymnastics. They need to maintain a team. So they get there, they rotate their workouts, the same, they're all together the whole time. The Gym America coach over there is a dedicated Celine coach. She is with our program the whole time. She's with our team at the meets, home and away. They're not just getting juggled among various folks. And really beyond the geography, they're lettering the same, the administration's the same, the same grade checks, the same eligibility rules. It's going to look and feel like any other Celine sport. And then just in this transition period, daily connectivity to Celine area schools. Patty Fosdick, our dean of students, she's kind of stepped up as a liaison day in and day out with those transitional things. We don't want to miss a gap at all with uniforms or getting all the physical forms in, just the everyday paperwork that could be tough on a new coach. We have someone stepping up there in addition to our strength and conditioning program, which is executed by the Barwas Company. All these gymnasts still have access to that. So that's the program as a whole. I don't know if people have seen the Gym America facility, but there's just a few images. If you don't mind scrolling through, I mean, it's massive. It's a state-of-the-art facility for our kids. So we're, we're very optimistic and we'll monitor this closely, obviously, as it, as it is a change. So I'll take any questions.
How far away is Gym America from here?
We drove it the other day, maybe two minutes from the high school. It's off state. You turn onto Heinz Drive, it's called. Very, very close.
As I was asking, I'm calling it up.
So their, their status will go from a varsity sport to a club sport?
They'll stay varsity district one sport.
Varsity varsity sport, but they're not going.
Nothing will change whatsoever, just the building.
Will the competitions be at this location too when they do conference?
Great question. They can play up to, or have up to 15 meets a year. Right now, there's 10 on the schedule, three of which are slated for home. We're working through that right now. They very well may end up at Celine High where they have been or at Gym America. Got to work through some schedules. We're going to have home meets no matter what. If we end up at Celine, we would definitely dedicate the days leading up to those home competitions to get over back on the home equipment. So there's no transition there.
So will we still have to maintain equipment here or will we bring them over from Gym America if we're having the meet?
Right. We, we do have the equipment here right now. They have, there's a room that we could have it in. So.
Or will we have to continue to maintain that equipment?
Possibly. The, the goal is to work things out insurance-wise and schedule-wise that we can move those meets to Gym America.
What is the cost difference?
Cost difference right now is within $400 from last year to this year. Yes.
What's the age of our existing equipment? Is that some that's going to be replaced soon?
I would say it's approaching, you know, the end of its viability on some of it. The beam was approved to be switched out this year, but it's getting there. Yeah.
So if we, since we're switching over, we're not going to switch, we're not going to change out the beam though, this year, since it was approved?
If we, if we end up over here, there wouldn't be a reason to. But the first home event is not slated until December 13th. So we've got some weeks there.
So is, is one of the Gym Americas personnel currently the coach since we did?
Yeah, her name is Mariah Shackley. She's the full-time, every time a Celine athlete's there, that's who's their coach.
And she's a Celine employee or contract?
Correct. Yes, we are paying her directly, as we would with any other coach.
I will throw in that they will have other coaches working at different events. So when our kids get to them, they'll have more coaching going on. And I can tell you from the past, they, they'll have one coach focusing on one person on one event, where now they're going to have multiple coaches helping with different areas than maybe their special area. So that's, that's another benefit of having more coaches over there.
And will these other coaches go through our same clearance procedures that we have?
They've gone through the Gym America process. The person we're employing directly has been through our clearance.
Will these other coaches also go through our clearance?
They have not. That's a good point.
I have been to Gym America and the facility is, is very nice.
It's impressive, yeah.
So I think that, that will be a nice facility for our gymnastics program.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also think this is a great idea. Try to leverage what we have in our community. I know it's very expensive to maintain all of our equipment.
Andrew.
Thank you. Audit report will be next.
So this is Jeff Higgins from Plan Moran.
So thank you and good evening. As Janice mentioned, my name is Jeff Higgins. I'm a partner with Plan Moran in charge of the district's independent financial statement audit. There's actually three documents that come out of the audit process. There's the financial report with supplemental information, which contains the district's audited financial statements. There's the federal awards supplemental information, which is our audit of the federal programs administered by the district. And finally, the report to the Board of Education, which provides information on the audit process and results. Now, as the district's independent auditors, it's our responsibility to express an opinion on the district's financial statements based on our audit, which is conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and the standards applicable to financial statements contained in government audit, auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. So I'm happy to report here tonight that based on the results of our audit procedures, we've rendered what's called an unmodified or clean opinion on the district's financial statements. This is the highest level of assurance that we can provide in a set of financial statements. So again, it's a, a positive report for the district's financials. So with that, we've put together a short presentation to touch upon some of the financial highlights for the year ended June 30th, 2018. And we're going to start with the government-wide balance sheet. So government financial statements actually include two levels of financial statement. So this is what's called the government-wide financial statement. So this is not typically used for management purposes, but it's really just intended to provide a longer-term view of a governmental entity's financials. It consolidates all the activities of the district, including assets and liabilities. And again, it's really intended to provide more of a long-term perspective. So just really a couple of quick things I wanted to point out here. And how this is set up, you see you have total assets at the end of 2018 of about 176 million, deferred outflows of resources, which is essentially an asset of 30 million. And you subtract from that liabilities of 273 million and deferred inflows of 12, so a total net position of a negative 79 million dollars. So it's important to keep in mind that nearly every district in Michigan would show a deficit net position similar to Celine in these government-wide financial statements. And really the reason for that is if you look a little bit above in the liability section, you see there's a net pension liability of 99 million and a net, what's referred to as OPEB liability, that's other post-employment benefits. That's essentially retired, the retirement healthcare system. So really the issue there is that the state MIPSers plan is roughly $26 billion underfunded. The retiree healthcare plan is roughly $9 billion underfunded. And under governmental accounting rules, all Michigan schools are required to report their proportional share of this unfunded liability on this statement. So Celine's share of that liability is roughly 0.4%. So your 0.4% of 26 billion is 99 million dollars. And so really it's those two numbers that drive that number negative. And like I said, this really isn't used for management purposes. It's important to keep in mind that, you know, the district is required to participate in this plan, even though you have no decision-making authority over the pension system. It doesn't change any decision-making or focus or approach for the Board of Education. And it really doesn't currently change the district's required contributions to the plan. It really is, really what this is doing is just emphasizing kind of the overall statewide underfunding issues that the MIPSers and the retirement plan have. But on the next slide is really where we get into the district-level financial management. And this is what's called the fund-level statement. So fund-level statements provide a So fund-level statements provide a more detailed view of the district's financials, really presenting how services are funded in the short term and what remains for future spending. And we focus on the general fund, as the general fund is the district's primary operating fund. So you can see here, and the general fund had total assets at June 30th of roughly $10 million. A couple of key items to note there is receivables of about $8 million at June 30th. Roughly $7.7 million of that is due from the state for state aid receivables. The state of Michigan pays its state aid payments in 11 installments. The first installment beginning in October, the last installment you then receive in August. What that effectively means is that 18% of your state aid is actually received after the end of your fiscal year-end. Creates a lot of cash management challenges for local districts. And you see one of the results of that on the liability side of the ledgers. You see it has total liabilities of about $7 million, including a state aid anticipation out of about $3 million. So Celine, like many other districts, to address this deferred payment methodology by the state ends up having to actually borrow money to deal with the cash shortfall that results from that deferred payment by the state. The difference between your total assets and total liability is then is your fund balance of about $2.9 million at June 30th, which we'll talk about more in a few minutes. But first, we want to focus on general fund revenues. So a couple of items to comment on here. You'll see it says general fund revenue excluding the MIPSers 147C. So we talked a minute ago about the underfunding of the pension plan. One of the state's strategies to deal with that underfunding is they've carved out some money in the State Aid Act under Section 147C, where the money essentially comes into the state, but then is immediately turned around or remitted to the retirement system. So because it's essentially just an in and an out, it's really not funds that the district has control over. We pull it out of these totals just to give you more of an idea of the controllable revenues for the district. So you'll see here, state revenue accounts for about 68% of the total revenue. Local source revenue, which is primarily property taxes, is 14%. Then your federal and inter-district sources, which is primarily the Act 18 Special Education Levy. Couple of items to note here. So the majority of the district's revenue, roughly 67%, is derived through the foundation allowance. So the foundation allowance is determined at the state, through the State Aid Act. So again, it's determined in Lansing. You really don't have any control over that number. So districts are allowed a per-pupil amount. So in Celine for last year, it was roughly $7,657 per student. So essentially, that per-pupil foundation times your blended enrollment of roughly 5,200 students drives 67% of your revenue. So what effectively ends up happening is local districts have very little ability, if you think of the revenues versus expenditures. Your revenues are primarily dictated through Lansing. They have a lot of control on the revenue side of the ledger. Couple of items to note, so you see from '17 to '18, we had about a 3.5% increase in revenue. About 1.5% is, there was a small increase in the foundation allowance last year, and there were some increases at-risk in Act 18 funding also. The next slide takes a look at the general fund expenditures by function effectively, or by object, excuse me. So you'll see roughly 86% of the expenditures are for salaries and benefits. Obviously, school districts are a people business. You're in the business of educating students. As you would expect, the vast majority of your expenditures are people-related costs. And so again, you have that challenge on the revenue side, where it's effectively fixed for you. And so when you start to manage the budget on the expenditure side, you see obviously the biggest component is salaries and benefits. So trying to manage those costs is obviously a significant challenge for districts in Michigan. Little bit of insight on the next slide in terms of the expenditures. This gives you an idea of how much of our expenditures relate to actual instructional costs. And we have some comparisons here by some other neighboring districts. So in Celine schools, you'll see that, and this is for 2017, by the way. So this is derived from reports through the state of Michigan, so obviously, they're still compiling 2018 information. But for 2017, you'll see that Celine spent approximately $7,093 per pupil on instructional activities compared to the total operating expenditures of about $11,000. As you can see, that compares pretty favorably to your neighboring districts here, which tend to, you know, Mylan 57, Ann Arbor 62, and Dexter and Chelsea there in the low 60s. You know, one item you might be asking is, well, if all these districts are near or over 60, how is Washtenaw County at 53%? Really, that's impacted by the fact that there are 14 charter schools operating in Washtenaw County, and charters tend to have a significantly smaller percentage of instructional costs as compared to total operational costs. That's why it drives down that countywide number. Next, we take a look at the last several years of results. So essentially, your revenues versus your expenditures, you can see that, you know, there's some ups and downs here. For 2018, we actually had expenditures over revenues of about $409,000, which was a little bit better than was budgeted. So again, the district budget for the year was to actually expend $835,000 of additional expenditures over revenues. So you came in a bit better than budgeted, so, you know, within plan, but a little on the positive side from a fund balance perspective. And you can see for the last several years, the history of the ups and downs, and again, these are more or less reflective of budgeted, planned-budgeted activity that the board sets through the budget process. So all those ups and downs add into your fund balance. So this last chart gives a fund balance as a percentage of total unrestricted revenue. So fund balance is essentially the accumulated savings of the school district. It basically represents the accumulated past activities of the general fund. Sometimes it's referred to as the rainy day fund. So fund balance provides stability in essentially a volatile funding environment, helps cover unexpected costs, so higher-than-expected utility bills, for example, unexpected maintenance. It can help as a hedge to temporarily offset unplanned enrollment losses, all those things that you can't foresee that happen throughout the year. It helps deal with those and gives you a little bit more flexibility to address those types of issues. So a question typically is, well, how much fund balance is an appropriate level? And this gives you some insight into the state of Michigan's thinking on that question. So back in 2015, the state enacted what's referred to as early warning legislation. And basically, what they do is take your fund balance, your general fund balance, divided by the unrestricted general fund revenue. So you might recall on one of the earlier slides, we talked about the general fund balance was $2,898,000. If you take that divided by your unrestricted general fund revenue of about $49 million, that gives you 5.8%. So the state would consider districts as part of the early warning legislation that if they have 5% or less for two consecutive years, the state defines that as an indicator of a district that's showing signs of financial distress. So from the state's perspective, that percentage should be at least 5% to deal with kind of the ups and downs that you're going to face from a financial perspective. So again, that's a pretty significant number. If you fall under that 5% level for two consecutive years, you're subject to significantly more oversight and reporting to the state of Michigan. So I would certainly encourage you to be cognizant of that number and keep an eye on it, and do what you can to maintain that 5% level. So that is a quick summary of the financial results. I did want to touch upon a couple things, areas of acknowledgement, and certainly, the first presentation is the most significant area for acknowledgement, I mean, certainly having that number of commended. And semifinalists is certainly terrific for the district. On the financial side, I did want to mention the successful completion of the $40 million bonded construction project. That is a significant amount of extra work, certainly for the administration. Also, it's something the state watches very carefully. We're actually required to separately audit bond expenditures, which we have done. And I'm certainly happy to report that we had no issues related to those expenditures. So certainly, congratulations on the successful completion of that project. And also, it is worth noting, last November, commending you on the passage of the sinking fund. Certainly, that's a good accomplishment. It does allow the district more flexibility in providing for instructional technology and addressing the security needs of the district. So certainly, congratulations with that. But with those comments, I'd be happy to address any questions, if there are any, on the financial statements.
What we just say is our greatest concern financially.
Well, my perspective is the fund balance level. So the fund balance would be a little bit lower level than we typically would like to see. So there's different ways of monitoring it. We talked about the state level of monitoring it. You know, the more traditional way is just to monitor as a percentage of your overall expenditures. So if you take your fund balance of roughly $2.9 million divided by your total expenditures of about $61 million, that's about 4.7%. And again, fund balance isn't the be-all and-all. If you look at the state average for June 30th, 2016, again, or, excuse me, '17, because 18 results are still being compiled, the state average was about 12.8%. So again, there's different reasons for that, there's different priorities. You are above the state's level of considering fund balance, but from my perspective, as just someone looking strictly at the finances of the district, I would personally like to see a little bit more fund balance, that would just provide a little bit more flexibility for those unexpected occurrences that pop up throughout, throughout the year.
Any accounting changes coming through that are potentially on the horizon that might affect us?
Well, the big one for this last year, and when I was on that original government-wide, is we had to start, so a couple of years back, we had to start reporting our share of the MIPSers underfunding. This last year, it was the share of the healthcare underfunding. There's really nothing for the next couple of years. Really, the next one that could have some significant impacts is for districts that lease assets. There's some changes to leasing rules, but that's a couple of years down the road, so nothing really too significant for June 30th, 2019.
Was there a particular reason to shut down those numbers, district by district? Is it to try to get people in the state to be more aware of the underfunding for some reason? Or is it just a new accounting rule?
Yeah, it's just really, it's a new accounting rule, and it's a little, like I said, it's one of those things that it creates, it's a little bit misleading, because again, local districts have no ability to control that underfunding. You're required to show that number. So the original, that statement that it applies on, like I said, it really isn't used for management purposes. When it was originally adopted 20 years ago, the idea was to make governmental accounting more comparative with corporate accounting. But it's interesting that corporate accounting wouldn't require companies to show that share of multi-employer pension underfunding. So really, it's a bit of an outlier, but the powers that make the rules decided it was valuable information. And again, it's nothing you can control here. Really, this sheds light more on the overall issue within the state.
Thank you, Janice, for all your work you've put into that, too.
And I would certainly want to, certainly if I have a moment, just to thank Janice. I understand, obviously, she's retiring here at the end of the year, and on behalf of Plant Moran, we'd like to thank her for all of her help. Certainly, Jeff Dalloway, Anthony Sassenowski from Plant Moran have worked with Janice for a number of years, and truly appreciate all the help and assistance.
It's like the Derek Jeter, but we hit the home run. Way to go, going out on top.
Perfect one. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, well, thank you.
Can I have a recommended motion to approve the audit report submitted by Assistant Superintendent Teller?
So who?
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, hearing none, motion carries 6-0. Can I get a recommended motion to approve the bid from Altech Ann Arbor in the amount of $69,820 for the high school server room air conditioner replacement, estimated by Assistant Superintendent Teller?
So who?
So the original unit for that area of the high school was installed in 2004, so it's showing its age, and it also really wasn't installed to cover a server room. We did have some issues this summer where the room was overheated and we had to turn off some portions of our connections, I guess. So we went out to bid. We had Rex and Troy came up with the specifications, went out for bid. We received three bids ranging between $69,000 and $94,000. Mr. Clary, do you want to add anything to that?
It's a system that runs 24/7 for 14 years. This, we're not actually replacing the system that's there. This is a new system. The existing system will be the backup. The new system, we power by the generator as well, so it'll be highly efficient. New cooling system for the camera servers and all the other servers. We brought into that headroom from kind of the middle school, the headroom at the high school, the main headroom. And we did have issues this summer, made two failures, where we had to shut down the systems and start over. Nothing was lost, but the more consistent we keep that room, temperature-wise, humidity-wise, the longer that equipment is going to last.
Are these $500 or just?
Yes, yes.
So Altech was the low bid.
As you can imagine, this is an area, we've, over the years, have moved various operations, tried to, you know, spread some things out, but as we continue to add technology, particularly cameras and other things, the amount of heat generated consistently is issue. We've had some portable units that we've tried at various points, and those both are somewhat problematic at times and also almost equally expensive when you consider cost of operation. This is a good investment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, hearing none, motion carries 6-0. Can I have a recommended motion to approve the resolution to impose a summer tax levy to collect all annual property tax, you know, school property taxes, estimated by Assistant Superintendent Teller?
So?
Support.
So this is just an annual resolution. We've been collecting our taxes in the summer for as long as I've been around, and so we just have to agree to it every year and pass that information on to the most hapless.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose, hearing none, motion carries 6-0. Discussion item is the grading policy.
Assistant Superintendent Lock, should?
Okay. Yeah, so all of you have a handout in front of you about the grading policy, and you should clarify, this is specifically for the high school. And Mr. Raff's going to comment in as well as we go through this. But we looked at this again, because the last time we reviewed the way the grading policy was set up at the high school was in 2010. And at that time, we were determining whether we were going to wait, provide a wait for AP classes or honors classes in the district. And we felt that it was due time for us to take another look at that. So we assembled the filing committee, myself, Kathy Uso, a high school counselor, Heather Milas, who's one of our high school teachers, Dr. Michael McVeigh, our Board of Trustees, Laurie Snyder, who's a parent and community member who works with him, Dr. Jim Priville, who's a parent and community member, and then Mr. Raff. And the filing document outlined some of those updates, and so we'll go over those and give you a chance to ask any questions if you'd like. That Celine area schools does apply weighted grades to AP classes and not honors classes. We did take another look, updated look, at other districts around us, not only in Washtenaw County, but also in Oakland and Wayne, and we looked at comparable districts, what they're doing. And largely, the vast majority of districts that we contacted are still providing a wait for AP courses. We use a 5.0 scale for AP classes, meaning that there would be an extra 1.0 bump for the highest level of an AP class, depending on how students do in those courses. And if you go to the backside of the handout, both weighted and unweighted class rank will still be reported on transcripts, and both weighted and unweighted GPA will be reported on transcripts. And the bottom line, the reasoning for still doing that is we have gone with the philosophy that really, we want colleges and universities to decide how they want to use that data. And we hear all the time about some colleges and universities are recalculating, others aren't, and this and that, and the idea is just provide as much information for colleges and universities to look at, and they can pull out what they feel is appropriate. And so we, we stuck with that philosophy moving forward. When it comes to the honor roll, we determined that we're going to be using both the weighted and unweighted GPAs for that, and so that students fall within this 3.0 to 3.6666. 4.6 is very important. GPA, they will receive silver status, and students who fall within the 3.6667 to 4.0 would be in the gold status for honor roll. Now, when it comes to Compass Night, I'll let Mr. Raff talk a little bit about that, and how we're going to.
Yeah, I'll just go back to the unweighted. For honor roll, it has always been unweighted. So this year, we did, the way we looked at it, went forward, is we can look at both. So we took a look at last year's class, and we took it this way, both. Really, it was only bumping kids up to the gold and really not affecting anybody else. And so it was actually benefiting our students more to add that opportunity to be weighted and unweighted. and unweighted. So what we did talk about is, last year, we did academic awards based on the top 5 percent of the class, unweighted only. And what we looked at, and I actually looked ahead and pulled the data from '16, '17, and ' '18, the three years that I've been, you know. I was, I've been two years, two and a half. But anyways, the number is very small. It's like six kids that aren't getting recognized for having weighted grades in comparison to, so like last year, there were six students that were not recognized at our, our highest honors banquet, based on the fact that they had weighted grades, that we did unweighted as the grade. So if we look at both, we may be adding six more students, five to six more students to our recognition day, a couple more minutes, and six more teachers possibly being recognized as, you know, it's kind of how it rolls. And then our Compass Night, which is, will contain, continuous honoring or recognizing students that meet our attributes. In a way, it's better for kids.
Yeah, it serves, it serves more students, really, by making these slight adjustments. That, that's an update.
Do you have any questions?
These are effective for this year.
So why not honors classes? Why not put those on the file?
Well, it's always been, the AP classes have always been self-selected by students. In other words, no real prerequisites or testing into, and students have always been able. And the honors are coming out of students placing in there based on various tests and whatnot, recommendations. And in looking at what other school districts are doing, the honors have never been getting that bump, and just trying to stick with the rationale that we really want to encourage students to take AP classes, and at least try any class would be a good incentive.
We have quite a few kids that take those AP classes, don't we?
Yes, we do. In fact, I think it's, well, actually, we're going to go over this in our board of discussion later. The, last I checked, last year, we had about 1,100 tests in AP, meaning there were 1,100, you know, different, different students, well, not different students, but different tests, which means quite a few kids are taking it, upwards of 550, 560 students.
Great. Board Policy Committee report.
The Board Policy Committee met a couple of weeks ago. We had one discussion about the volunteer policies and how there are some nuances to the new policy manuals that are opposed to the old policy manuals. So we got a request for some advice. We gave the advice to follow similar policies in the past. I don't think we really needed to adjust the policy, just kind of implementation. Volunteers are treated the same way we would treat employees as far as background checks and other things. Conferences, we'd like to see, similar to field trips, conferences be, I don't want to say managed a little better, but acknowledged a little better to the board. We're essentially approving field trips for students and teachers to go. The same for other people that are out representing the district should be brought to everyone's attention, because it's a lot of good stuff going on outside. PD conferences and that. We did get an inch and a half, two-inch stack of updates for the Arneola updates that we will discuss.
Next Monday.
Next Monday, potentially. I have maybe a little tweak to that, so we'll see here.
If you do it on Thanksgiving Day.
If you do it on Thanksgiving Day.
Thankful for the two inches of review. And a little more time. Okay, thank you. Board Finance Committee report, trustee Valente.
Yes, we met last week, and as you heard earlier tonight, we did a review of the financial audit, all of it right here. We went in-depth into that, and again, pleased report with a very clean audit. So again, Janice, very good job with this, again. We also had an update on our bond issuance. Series one is now completed as of July 31st. We now also have the funds for series two, and we're reviewing, finalizing contracts, bids with construction management and all of that. We're also, we discussed the, our HVA system, HVAC system, just in general, to see how we can manage the costs a little bit more effectively. Next meeting December 3rd, 5:00.
Consent agenda. Can I have a recommended motion to authorize the filing items as part of the consent agenda? A, approval of regular Board of Education meeting minutes of October 23, 2018. B, approval of Board Policy Committee meeting minutes of October 29, 2018. C, approval of Board Finance Committee meeting minutes of November 6, 2018. D, approval of payment of general fund accounts payable of November 13, 2018 in the amount of $1,205,519.78. E, approval of payment of series one bond fund accounts payable of November 13, 2018 in the amount of $39,345.51. F, approval of payment of series two bond fund accounts payable of November 13, 2018 in the amount of $262,080. G, receiving file, November Curriculum Finance and Community Research report.
So moved. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries six zero. Items for the next agenda.
I know we have a music performance.
We could have the board's self-evaluation results as well. She said she could give them to me hopefully by that meeting.
This is the last opportunity for public comment. Next meeting, Board of Education meeting will be held November, on November 27, 2018 at 6:30 PM in the Liberty School Boardroom. Can I have a recommended motion to enter closed session for the Board of Education at, let's say, 7:35? For the intent to re-enter open session and, correct me, I was just saying 8:15 for the purposes. Ten, evaluation and collective negotiations.
Take it back. So moved.
President Austin? Aye. Trustee Dale, he isn't here. Trustee Hummel?
Aye.
Vice President Heinig?
Aye.
Trustee McVeigh?
Aye.
Secretary Fannas?
Aye.
Trustee Valente?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you.